I am Laura Schaffrin and I am acting as chair this evening for Lance McNally, who could not attend. Any way to make that larger, Beth? Okay. Thank you. Call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I'd like to ask for a roll call, please.
Carol Hofstas is present.
Julie Byers is present.
Laura Schaffrin present. Is Michael on?
I don't see him.
Okay. Anybody else here that is has joined us? Would you please announce yourselves? Brenda? Miranda? Not sure if we have people here for specific reasons or not. And Alyssa Struthers. Okay. Under 1.2 Chairman's additions or deletions, we are adding 233 Main Street correspondence, which we had on our agenda at the last meeting, but it was not discussed. So we're going to add that down under the work session. 2.7, is that okay, Beth? Okay, so go directly into work session. Review and discuss Townsend's master plan 2021, final draft, version 11. I, after Friday's meeting, Beth, do we have the final and is that something we need to do tonight? I'd rather have a full board.
Correct. The, that certainly, we don't have the final, the final draft, version 12, I guess it would be. The master plan committee did meet on Friday, as you said, and I expect at that point to receive the final draft, version 12, in about a week. There were some more changes they were working on. But Friday was their final meeting for.
And that was a long meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, 2.2. 145-26, yes, this was the bylaw amendment regarding the foul on residential districts. So after we received that letter from the commissioner on, and I don't know, do you want to put that letter up?
Sure.
Which was at the end of September. I believe that Lance at an October meeting said that he would look into this a bit further. And he did. And found although the commissioner's determination, and we'll see it in a minute here.
This one?
Yeah. So we're going to go down to where he basically talks about roosters because everything else makes sense in that all animals, no matter what they are, chickens, roosters, hens, should be contained within the owner's property and not be let to roam from property to property. And and he goes on to say about the things that they can do, which are destructive on other people's properties, and that shouldn't happen. In this area here, he talks about the roosters. And his suggestion is that the roosters, like these other sided towns, Lawrence and Chicopee and Plymouth and Winchester, all prohibit roosters. And if anybody's ever lived on a farm or near where roosters are, you know, they get up earlier than 7:00 AM. And he did find somewhere, although I was not able to find it, he thought it was Acton, where they allow the roosters, but they have to be contained between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, so that not to disturb the neighbors, which makes sense. So I told him that I would bring that report forward this evening to the board. And we could then, as a board, look at this, crafting some language for an acceptable bylaw to be added to this section of our bylaws. Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
How would you contain a rooster from 7:00 to 7:00 from making a lot of noise?
We have, well, according to what was written, what he thought he found, and we should find it, they are contained within a closed building.
So, you know, because I live in Timberlake Park. And I mean, I have more acreage where I live in Timberlake Park. But if you're in the older section where there are houses much closer together and mostly half acre lots, though some are larger. I know that there's one house that has rooster that if I was next door to that rooster, I'd go insane because the middle of the day, it's roosting very loudly.
Yeah.
Where I am, you know, Laurie, because you sold me my house, you know, I have a lot of woods.
Yep.
You know, when our houses are far apart, but even, even still, I can hear roosters from the farms down the road, though they're muffled. So for me, they wouldn't be that annoying because the trees muffle the sounds. But when I go walking in Timberlake Park where the older section is and there's not a lot of space and there's not a lot of muffling, I wouldn't go insane if it was next door to that person.
Yeah. Okay, well, obviously, this is something that should be discussed then further once we can craft some kind of bylaw to massage, if you will, before we present that. Because from what you're saying, you might say, well, maybe we should be like these other towns that absolutely ban them. I think the-
Well, I think the bylaw now says something about two to five acres for commercial, whatever.
Yeah, but if somebody just has chickens for their own-
Yeah, for their own things.
They say the rooster enhances-
The eggs or something?
Yeah, the production.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I mean, it's half a dozen of them, but I think half acre lots are probably a little bit too small for, for keeping the roosters.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, so that's the update on this. Think about it. We'll have it on a future agenda. Okay, okay, Beth, back to the agenda. I appreciate this. And next item is 2.3. Do you have an update, Carol?
Actually, I was on the, the second of the three networking calls that we had a few weeks ago. Excuse me. Basically, I talked to Rachel after, she's the district coordinator. Because during the networking call, we get into group sessions and we discuss different topics. And most everybody on these calls are from the schools, representatives of the schools. But one of the things I had asked, because I have a granddaughter at the Spalding School, and I was trying to get a feel for what's the expectation in Townsend of kids walking the school and like, my granddaughter couldn't walk to school because she lives way over a north end road. But still, you're talking young children walking on 119. And I was talking about what kind of safety and stuff. But anyways, come to find out, they do assessments and Rachel has never done an assessment for Townsend on the walkability of things. So she's supposedly going to get together with the principals of Spalding and the middle schools to do this assessment. The other thing, I reached out, I, my daughter, who has the children, had mentioned to me about the police department giving out certificates to kids for safe biking. So I called the police department and asked them information. And they sent me a bunch of information that I sent to Rachel to see if we could get credit for that program. But unfortunately, we, she said that wasn't one of the programs that we could get credit for. But she did send me a list and a lot of it is comes from the schools, actually. Walking and bike riding and bike-a-thons and walking clubs and through the school. So I guess my next thing is to see if Rachel does her assessment and then figure out how we're going to go from there. And I think that's the update.
Okay, well, thank you for that. The the certificates on the safe biking, which were the helmets, that's been in town for a very long time. And that's too bad that that's something that can't be used.
Yeah, I tried because I talked to the, well, I sent an email to the police department and they sent me a very nice email back explaining the program and how they send out the certificates for ice cream and different things. And I just forwarded the email to see if we could get credit for that program. And unfortunately, we couldn't.
Okay, thank you for your efforts on that. It's awesome.
I thought it was a pretty good program. I thought we would get some points for that.
Yeah. I agree. Okay, 2.4 Townsend Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness and Hazard Mitigation Plan Implementation. Beth?
Yeah, it's still kind of going, moving along. We do have help in the Land Use Office now, as I said, and we're putting together a website for the program. The town is very close, is actually interviewing for the grant administrator position. That's going along very well. So we may have someone to help us with the implementation part of this, which would be really nice. So more on that soon.
Sounds awesome. Progress, progress, progress. 2.5 Massachusetts Joint Transportation Committee update. I don't have anything on that.
Yeah, that one's me. Next one's you. There is a meeting coming up. I think it's this Wednesday. In your folders, I'm not going to go to it now. But I put the agenda, I also put the, basically the minutes and the, any kind of updates would be in that folder. And it's the, I believe the meeting's on the ninth. I'm sorry, it's Wednesday. So if you want to review anything that's going on, you know, with that committee, you could just read through the meeting materials packet, similar to what, similar to your planning board packets. This morning, I did attend the final intersection analysis for Main Street, Canal Street, and West Elm Street. We had a member of MJ, a member of MRPC present, two members present. George Snow and Brad Harris came. They gave an excellent presentation on the document and talked about some of the steps that the town can take and some of the alternatives, you know, all the alternatives that they proposed were discussed. So at this point, it's, there'll be more to come, more hearings and more, you know, public feedback about the, you know, what the town wants to do there. And I will put that presentation in the folder. I don't think, I was trying to do that before the meeting. But I'll put the presentation in the folder for board members and keep them, keep you up to date on future meetings.
Okay, thank you, Beth, on that. So 2.6 is the Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission update, of which I'm on, so that's my report. Our next meeting is this Wednesday. And their announcement of the meeting anyway was in the planning board packet in your folder. We've had some, actually, a lot of increase of communities wanting to participate in the different programs, which causes us to need more staff. So they are, in the last meeting or so ago, we voted for them to go ahead and hire certain positions. At the time, there was a person's name, but it was also left open in case that the person didn't fill that position. So things are going along good. We, there are still lots of grants available and that more participation from all of the communities since in all the years I've been on the commission. So that's the update there. And next, we have 2.7. And could you put that in reference to 233 Main Street up on the screen?
Yes, I'm going to have to find that. Might take me just a moment.
That the zoning board of appeals one?
Yep, for 233 Main Street, so. And I'm, yeah.
We certainly don't lack for documents.
Aye, 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 Cam.
2.4?
2.4, or for the last meeting. Just wondering, we met on the second, correct?
Yeah, with the master plan.
Yeah, so that's where it should have been. So it was on two, yeah, 2.4 on this meeting. Yeah.
I think I saw you pass a zoning board 2.4.
Okay, so then it would have been 2.4, right here, right here. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Not always that quick.
You are awesome. So what would you like me to open? This is the application. He did a phenomenal job in the plot plan, the application, the letter. There's a number of documents, summary letter?
Yeah, why don't we start with the summary letter and then go to the plot plan?
Maybe.
That may. Now, Julie said that she did have the opportunity to read this. Carol, have you?
I read it a while ago, but I remember that just a minute, it's adding the the compounding section, which is what, six inches from the property line?
To another property that they own.
Own, yes. They own both parcels of plots.
Okay. To me, it made sense for what they were attempting to do. And I think, as Julie said before, there's a a state mandate involved here for something, I guess, space and activity that the pharmacy needs to comply with. Am I saying that correctly, Julie?
Yeah, it's the Board of Pharmacy. That's what they're trying to conform to.
Okay. If there are no questions about that from the board, can we look at the plot plan?
Sure. I'm trying to think which one shows it the best, I guess.
It's right here. Because you see the little red outline?
Yeah, that's the addition, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I see the inches. And yet, there's still that, there's still that dividing thing there, too. I mean, there are little driveway.
They're direct right up through here. I'm not sure that they'll be able to still use that driveway, but-
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to.
No, okay.
Okay. Apparently, that's okay with them, too. They have plenty of room in the back for their parking and use. Okay, so now let's, if you don't mind, we will go to the referral letter, which is something that we want to get back to them prior to the Wednesday night's public hearing.
All right. And I don't have it in here, I apologize. But it's the standard comment, and I would fill in the comment. And so you can make the motion for your comment, and I will fill it in for you and put the vote of the board on that document. And I'm sorry, I don't have the actual form right here.
Okay, I understand.
It's in my file.
Okay, so do I have a motion from the board for a comment to the zoning board of appeals in reference to this hearing?
I'll make a motion for a comment to the zoning board of appeals for 233 Main Street.
And-
I'll second it.
Okay, but what's your comment?
Oh, what's the comment?
So in other words, the planning board agrees with or disagrees with the approval of a permit for this construction. And Beth, is it considered a special permit?
It is, yeah. It's a special permit under bylaw 145-18, which is basically a pre-existing non-extension of a pre-existing non-conforming lot, an addition on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. So if you want, you can simply put no comment, which means you basically have no concerns or, you know, or add your comment. Either way is fine.
I'm okay with entertaining a motion that the verbiage that Beth just stated in reference to the bylaw and the granting of a special permit. I would hear that as a motion, or if you just wanted to do no comment, it's up to the board.
I'm okay with doing no comment.
Well, yeah, okay, no comment.
Okay, so it appears that we have a no comment that goes back to the zoning board of appeals in reference to this issue. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. Carol?
I guess.
Julie?
Julie Byers, yes.
And Laura Schaffrin, yes. Okay. Do we have anything else on the agenda?
I don't, let me double check.
Beth, is there another property has to do with a dog grooming place on, also on Main Street? I could have sworn I saw that.
Yes. Yes, yep, that's under notices from Townsend and other towns.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, I read that, too. Julie, can you handle the correspondence or Beth, can you?
Oh, yeah, either way, I didn't-
I vote Beth.
We're a bit happy, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. We're a bit, the board is a bit behind because again, we've been, the board's been working hard on the master plan. And in doing so, a lot of the correspondence was kind of, you know, pushed, put off. Nothing important was put off, of course. But there are a number of notices. What I'll do first is, if I may, I just wanted to bring this annual town election update to the attention of the board. I'm not sure that you all got a chance to read it. But these are some of the dates to remember for the upcoming Townsend Annual Town Election, April 25. And am I still screen sharing?
Yes.
Okay, so, so these are important dates because some of the seats will need to be, you will need to pull papers for your seats. And-
Yeah, I didn't see my name on this. And I just got elected, so I don't know.
Yeah, so you were pulled, you pulled papers, right? Or did you?
No, I was voted in at the last election.
You were a write-in, yeah.
I was a write-in on the, and then they told me I won my seat. But I thought it was a five-year seat, but I have no idea.
So, yeah, so if you're a five-year seat, then you don't need to run at the next annual election. You're all set. What, what the town clerk has said here is, these are the openings for the planning board, the town clerk has stated. There's one, at the next town election, there'll be one five-year seat open. There'll be a three-year vacancy or one to fill for three years, and there'll be one for two years. So Julie's is a two-year term, and-
But I wasn't voted in. I, I just volunteered. I thought I had to.
Yeah, see, that, yeah, that's where it gets tricky. So what happens is you, you would take out papers for the next election. And then you would, you know, if you were elected, you would fill a two-year term. So right now, what you're doing is you're, you know, you're filling in for the, until the next town election. That's how it works. I was kind of, I was kind of hoping the town clerk would come and explain all this, but-
It's very confusing because I was like, volunteered. And then, and then I was volunteered again. I went from the associate member and then got stuck with Lance. No one, Chaz left, I got his seat. And then the next thing I know, I was told I had to take out papers and-
So Lance McNally, Chairman McNally's term is up. So we're hoping he will take papers out. I hope everyone will. But the advice of the town clerk is that, you know, basically, she, she strongly encourages anyone who would like to serve to take out papers, get the required signatures, and have your name on the ballot. So that would mean, that would mean Lance, Julie, and Lori at this point. So we really hope that, you know, I can help with that, or if the town clerk can help with that, I'm sure she would be most helpful in helping you through that process. That was the one thing I had meant to note, the update there. So so notices from other towns, I'm going to quickly go through. Okay, so tomorrow night, I see that Ian has joined us. And he is on tomorrow night's agenda for his appointment. Hooray! So we have that at 7:00 tomorrow at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. It'd be great if you could join and say hello, Ian. But if you can't, that's okay, too. It's not required.
Yeah, I was scared earlier because I saw, I tried to go into the meeting. Apparently, there was a meeting this morning to at 9:00. And I was, I was betting it was at 6:30. I was like, I'm, I'm late. And then I saw the 9:00. I was like, oh, it was this morning. And then I started going around and then I found it was, it still was a 6:30 for the planning board. But yeah, I'm going to be present tomorrow at 6:00 for the meeting.
Okay, great. Yeah, it looks like they'll probably be around 7:00. Yeah, it looks like they'll probably be around seven o'clock, but you're welcome to, you know, obviously, any time you hop in. And it is actually not, for those of you, it doesn't have to be a joint meeting because this is an appointment of an associate position, associate member. So board members are welcome to attend. And that's tomorrow. Okay, here's the warrant. I don't, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. It is on the town website for the meeting on the 14th, December 14th. The planning board has no articles, as you know, on the warrant, but I just wanted to make, make sure everybody was aware of that.
Is that going to be in-person meeting?
It is, yes, yeah. It's going to be, as far as I know, it's going to be in Memorial Hall.
And will it be available on Zoom or Owl or whatever?
I am assuming it will, but you know, that's a great question and I will get that answer for you. I could go to the town website, but I won't do that right now during the meeting, but I'm assuming it's going to be like a hybrid meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll, I'll, I'll confirm that for you. Some of the other things are the legal notice for 478 Main Street. Couple of you mentioned that. This is I kind of don't know if you can see that or not.
Yeah, that's on the dog grooming.
So that's coming up. Basically, 478 Main Street, it's a, it's a, it's a proposal is for basically one client at a time. It's a fairly, you know, it's pretty, actually a very low-traffic proposal. She just wants to basically do a dog at a time at her home and work out of her house. So that is on yeah, January 12th at 6:15. And if anybody wants the application, I can get that for them. So as the planning board, do we need to do the same thing on that that we just did on the other one? You will. And the reason I didn't do it tonight is because this has actually just been posted and I thought we could, there's plenty of time to get our, the comment in, if that's okay. And so what I'll do is I'll send, I'll make sure you see the application before you have to do your referral. Exactly. Good point. So what else do we have? That's, that already happened. Jeff Street is being continued on the same day, January 12th. I don't know if any of you were, you know, interested in that or attending that, that is has been continued. They're looking for more information on, on the use, the history, the past use of the property. And notices from other towns are fairly lengthy. If you guys would like to look at those on your own time, that's fine. If you would like, I can read through them. But there are, there are quite a few in there. But that's just the scanner, sorry. So that's full documents. Yeah. Oh, I do have a quick summary here. I could do. The dates on these. Okay, I can do these here. Again, the eight Jeff Streets Continued, Town of Pepperell, Notice of Decision from the Zoning Board of Appeals, a special permit to allow an accessory apartment. The 24 Crawford Way was granted. Town of Groton, a Notice of Decision for the Zoning Board of Appeals, a variance from a setback for a new dwelling on Common Street was granted. A Town of Groton Notice of Decision was ZBA, a special permit to allow the alteration of a non-conforming structure slash use on a non-conforming lot on Bope House Road was granted. The Town of Groton Notice of Decision, the Zoning Board of Appeals, a special permit to allow the alteration of a non-conforming commercial structure on Adams Ave was granted. There you have that. So I think, yeah. And Stormwater Permit Updates is basically Yes, under Stormwater Permit Updates, we have, the planning board, the Stormwater Authority received a application for renewal of the Campbell Farm OSPD definitive subdivision, Stormwater Management Permit. That's a lot of words. So whereas this was the first one that I had done and I looked through the files and realized I think the town has done, this is a first renewal of that Stormwater Management Permit, I checked the town council to find out what the responsibility is, what my responsibility is as admin and what the Stormwater Authority responsibility is. And I put the I put that information in the file. So town council responded that this application could be considered by the planning board in a regular meeting. And so I have planned, you know, if it's, if, you know, it pleases the board, I'll put it on the December 22nd agenda. And you can review the application and ask any questions or stuff at that time. And it's basically a decision of to extend, you know, to extend or not to extend or to get, extend with conditions or that. So and Wheeler Road is compliant. Everything is up to date in that file. And 22 West Meadow Road, the solar array, I'm still working on the certificate of compliance for them. Great. And I think that's it.
Okay, so I did want to just say to all of you who will be taking out papers on January 12th, I should be around and I'm willing to help anyone get their signatures so that they can be on the ballot. And not just for planning, but for any of the other ones that you may desire. When is our next meeting?
That would be the 22nd, Monday, the 22nd of December, right before Christmas.
Time flies. Okay, it's the 20th.
The 20th, right?
I thought the 2nd was the, was a Wednesday.
Oh, sorry, you're right, 20th.
We all double-check each other.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other business to come before the planning board? Carrie Nunn, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 5:00, oh, excuse me, 7:00. Flowers behind you guys.
Yeah, enjoy that evening. I'll make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting at 7:08.
Thank you, so a second?
And I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote.
Julie Byers, yes.
Carol Hoffes, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you all very much for your attention this evening.